All right. All the order July 2, 2025, full meeting for the city of Gerhardt. All right. We're going to open with the public hearing. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact, or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or the land use board of appeals, or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission or city council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. I hereby open the hearing. Does any counselor need to declare a conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or personal bias? No?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to challenge the council's ability or someone on the council to make an impartial decision? Saying no hands raised, we'll move on. Can we have the staff report, please? Is that Garrett?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Garrett. It's Phillips, our planner. Garrett, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, crystal clear. Good.
All right. Thank you. So I'll give you a brief overview of the flood hazard overlay zone text amendments that are before you. Before I do that, just to get it in the record, this was a, this hearing began in the June city council meeting and was continued to today. And I don't think that it was specified that like certain issues were closed to discussion. So the hearing continues to be open from June, is my understanding. In any case, the same two options that we presented to you in, in June are presented again today. Option A is to amend the flood hazard overlay zone text to make it consistent with basic FEMA requirements for flood risk reduction. Option A is closely modeled on the Oregon model floodplain management ordinance that was last updated in around 2020, where we've just updated some of the particulars for Gerhardt, like referencing our city name and referencing our local flood risk maps. Option B is inclusive of option A. It addresses some flood risk reduction issues that we need to catch up on in our zoning ordinance, but it also adds additional regulations that are intended to protect endangered species. They're particularly geared towards towards salmon. And they're known as the Pickham requirements, the Endangered Species Act implementation compliance measures. And so option B adds some additional regulations to our floodplain management ordinance in the Gerhardt zoning code that isn't about flood risk reduction to, to life and property, but is rather about protecting endangered species habitat. FEMA has told all cities and counties that have floodplains and endangered or threatened salmon that they have to do this by July 31 of 2025. But I'm not aware of any of our peer cities in Clatsop County or the county itself having done this yet. And as the memo outlines, and as our land use attorney and I have outlined in the, in the prior meeting, we have concerns about option B being inconsistent with state land use laws regarding only using clear and objective standards for the review of housing developments. And that issue has still not been resolved. We haven't received any guidance from FEMA or the state of Oregon on how to resolve those consistency issues. We were expecting and continue to expect some larger, more well-resourced communities to try to resolve that on their own. And perhaps we could use, use their work as a model. But we don't have that information yet. And so, as in June, our recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation from their May hearing would be to go ahead and adopt option A as soon as you're ready to, but to wait on adopting option B until we can resolve consistency issues with Oregon land use laws. And I'm happy to tell you more about the particulars of both options if you have any questions about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. It's a question. And we're doing this adoption of, if we do option A, we're doing that to meet the FEMA regulation of having to do it by the end of July, right?
Option A, FEMA wanted us to do option A by summer of 2024. And we, and then they told us in, in summer of 2024 that about the Pickham option B. And they said that we actually, that we were going to have to do that within the next few months. So that the expectation was to have finished that in fall of 2024. And so staff thought, well, you know, we can probably be a little bit late with option A and we'll just do all of this at once. And FEMA has extended their deadline that they notified us of for option B from last fall to July 31 of this year. There are some reasons to think that perhaps that even that deadline could be extended based on some, some activity in federal court. And at this point, we are now a year past FEMA's request to adopt option A. And it, it feels like, like we should do that just in case this deadline on option B continues to get moved, you know, a month here, six months there. So.
So Garrett, basically, we're adopting this so that the this property owners in the Gerhardt area can still receive flood insurance through FEMA. Is that correct?
That's right. There is some, there's, because FEMA has, has officially done a community assistance visit and notified us in writing that we need to make the kinds of changes that are in option A. And they gave us a timeline for doing that. The city is at some peril of of losing its good standing in the National Flood Insurance Program by delaying adoption of option A. We haven't gotten any follow-up communications to that effect in the last year, but but yes, doing that is, is required to maintain good standing and good standing is what you need in order for property owners in Gerhardt to be eligible for subsidized flood insurance. And for property owners in the city to be eligible for certain forms of flood disaster relief after a flood. And for us to be eligible as a city to receive federal grants and loans for projects in the floodplain, to the extent that that's relevant or applicable.
So Garrett, what are the consequences if they don't move the deadline for option B adoption? What are the consequences if we don't have, haven't done that since 31st of July?
The next step would be that FEMA would communicate to the city that it appears that we've failed to meet the deadline, or they would ask us to confirm that. And they would schedule a community assistance visit. And they would identify that we're not in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program on that, on that point, on option B. And they'd give us a timeline for coming into compliance, or else risk losing our good standing in the National Flood Insurance Program.
What do you anticipate that timeline would be?
I don't want to give you a false sense of security, but you know, at the soonest, I would think that you know, they would notify us. I mean, if, if they, if they were, if they were aggressively dealing with this, they could notify us and, and give us you know, like a couple of months probably to, to deal with it. You know, like we could, we could deal with it right away at that time at the next city council meeting, for example. But it is notable that like the, the region 10 FEMA staff for floodplain management, their numbers have been reduced by half or over half in the last six months. Similarly, at DLCD in Oregon, their floodplain management staff has been reduced from two to one. They have limited capacity to the extent that they can't deal with this and all of the other cities and counties that don't adopt option B, or as we're calling it option B by July 31st. To the extent that they can't deal with it in like an automated batch fashion and have to prioritize. I also suspect that the city of Gerhardt wouldn't necessarily be the highest priority based on the number of properties and the value of properties and the acreage of salmon habitat that are at play here compared to some other communities. But I think it's something that we could respond to in a timely fashion and that I'm, I, I don't think that you'd necessarily be hearing from like FEMA about it first. Like I'm, I'm paying close attention to what's happening. I'm staying in touch with other planners in the region, visiting DLCD's webpage and the FEMA webpage and trying to stay abreast and, and the webpage for the federal court that's driving FEMA's requirements in the first place and, and really trying to stay abreast of, of anything new that comes up.
Any other questions for Garrett?
I have more of a, a comment, or maybe you can clarify that. I, I found the discussion in the planning commission minutes for May 8th very enlightening. I really appreciated the constructive and in-depth conversation that the planning commission had on this. But one thing that stood out to me was our, our attorney, Peter, God bless his soul, who I'm finding out now, now that he's passed even more than I knew when he was alive, was really knew his stuff when it came to land stuff and he was well-respected in the state. And one of the things that he said was that there was some danger in going forward with option B because it is still undecided and that if the courts or something else comes down on, against FEMA or FEMA withdraws, we could be left out over our skis if we have created a situation that harms some of our homeowners. Is that, is that just what he said? Did I get that right?
Yeah, I remember him saying that. I mean, I think that on some level, I don't know if, if we'd, if we'd be at, at risk. And he didn't explain that, that to me, like what he was really thinking there. I think that we would, we would, staff would be put in a position of having to like not implement requirements that are in our zoning code, which we don't want to have to do if they're not clear and objective. The communities have to do that and even we, we already have to do it, but we really want to minimize staff saying, oh, this is in our zoning code and we have to ignore it because it's not clear and objective. And it's, it adds like administrative cost of having to come back and invite city council to then amend the code again to, to remove those regulations. I mean, I think, yeah, Pete, Peter is a, is a, is a, was a well-respected attorney and I, I looked to his impressions and took them very seriously. And you know, I think we also both are observing that we don't, we don't see other communities adopting this yet. And, and we take that seriously as well. And we just know, you know, we're paying attention and, and we can be responsive to changing conditions and come back and invite you to adopt them. So.
Thank you.
I have a question or maybe a comment. Didn't we not continue this hearing simply because we wanted to leave the record open in case that federal case did get settled? And we would have more information on whether or not we wanted to even consider pursuing option B? I thought that was pretty much why we continued the hearing.
Yeah, it was that, it was to, it was to keep it open for new information from the court and to keep it open for any new information or guidance from FEMA or DLCD on how to resolve inconsistencies between option B and state of Oregon housing laws. And there's no new information on either front.
Yeah, we're still waiting a lot of clarification from FEMA that we're not getting.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else got anything for Garrett? Okay, I think I'm going to go to ask the audience if there are any proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents that wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Tom T's 292 would have been able. I don't see how we can make an ordinance that's not clear. That is just, it's, it's a jungle. You know, it'd be like making a fire ordinance and saying, yeah, you can have a fire and you can't have a fire. It doesn't tell me anything. What they want us to do is very iffy.
Right. Well, if you're, you're stating it simply, it is iffy. But if we don't do it, then we jeopardize our flood insurance. I don't have flood insurance.
Right.
But there's a lot of people that do have flood insurance. And I can't say that I would be willing to jeopardize their flood insurance because it's an iffy ordinance. We're just put it on the back burner and hold it in a burning situation, if you will, on the back burner and just see if it smokes. Because I don't know what else to do.
I know.
You know, if the federal government goes, we're going to take your insurance. You know, you're going to have to do what they want. I, I hate that.
How legally they could do that. Well, being they're offering something that is not clear. Well, and they're changing their mind constantly.
Well, that's there's no, I mean. I, I get it. You know, but you know, as a, a little city that doesn't have any resources to go after the big dog, we have to do something. And if it means agreeing to the option A and getting it passed by the 31st and seeing what happens, then that's what we have to do. And then we gotta go back and rescind option A when FEMA goes belly up.
No, no, option A, my understanding is option A just gets us to the point of being in compliance with state law and the FEMA flood map requirements that we are required to do. It's updating policies that we already have or in ordinance that we already have. The confusing and non-objective part is option B, which has not been recommended by the planning commission or city staff for us to adopt.
But it's the new flood maps that are questionable from FEMA. They revisited the flood maps.
Garrett's got his hand up.
Garrett?
Yeah. So just to be clear, a couple of things. This, both option A and B, neither one of them affect the boundaries of the floodplain and the area that is regulated by the city's flood hazard overlay zone. So no geographic boundary changes with either one. And then to the first point about option A versus option B, option A really is taking care of, of basic requirements that every other community in America. Well, I shouldn't say everyone. There, there's some that have opted to not participate. But almost every community in America with, with floodplains uses an ordinance like the one that we're trying to adopt in option A. And that is something that we were supposed to have done by a year ago and, and staff and the planning commissioner recommending that we do that now. Option B is the one with a July 31st deadline. The standards that are inside of it are in some cases ambiguous. FEMA has shown like a history in the last year of being not clear about their deadlines and they've made changes to what they say they want us to do. That's all option B, all of that stuff. So we are recommending adoption of option A. And that will not affect our floodplain boundary or the flood maps themselves.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. I know for that part. All right. So we're going from opponents to neutral comments. Are there any neutral comments? And you don't have a rebuttal to anything that was said. I mean, you just gave rebuttal, so we'll count that as the opponent's statement was rebutted. You know what I mean? Okay. So I'm going to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Aaron's closed. All right. Moving on, declaration of conflict of interest for the city council meeting. None? All right. We are now going to go to the approval of minutes, the regular meeting and public hearing on June 4th.
Move to approve. Second with some typos. I have some also.
All right, Sharon, go ahead.
From page two, down towards the bottom, it says city planner Phillips referenced the statue that says all housing statute. Pretty sure. Page three, in the largest paragraph, that starts with Eric Helfram, go down two thirds, it says outside the tsunami indication zone. That's what I found.
Okay, on, on page one, and this is really minor, but since we're making corrections anyway, after June, first line after June 4th, comma, 2025. But the one that has actually changes a little bit is on page seven. Second bullet down where it says council gold attended the Cedar Awards. I also attended their board meeting and that is where they discussed their budget. And then Sharon, all my others.
Okay. Motion to accept as amended.
Motion to accept as amended.
A second? All, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, moving on. Planning committee? That's the regular. We have the planning commission report in minutes. Everyone's got copy in their packet? Everyone good with that?
Yeah, the work that they put into this and, and the minutes on this discussion really helped me understand the, the problem better.
All right. We'll go on to counselors reports. Sharon, you have something?
Uh, yeah, I attended the, the Seaside Airport. We had a special meeting the other night. City of Seaside is working on updating the bylaws for all their committees, commissions, whatever. So as a committee at Seaside committee, we went through all our bylaws. Second thing is to the property owner to buy the property. And response has not been received yet.
Got it. That is it? Paulina?
I attended the ribbon cutting over at Trail Sand Art for the little art gallery. It was a very positive event and about 30 or 40 people there. It was real fun and you should go visit it. It's right over there by their brand. Let's see it a little better. A great place to take a grand chat or someone visiting too. Had my usual meetings with Chad and did several check reviews for Justine. I attended the Clatsop County Hospital Task Force. There we heard a presentation from a planner by the name of Gil Kelly. He's, was a planner for Vancouver, BC, a number of places in Oregon and specifically talked about an empty homes tax. He recommended for cities that are considering that one to one and a half percent of the assessed value annually. In Vancouver, they used it to purchase land to build affordable housing. And this is about 10 years ago in, in Vancouver, BC. They had condo high rises that were basically being bought by foreign investors and were sitting empty. And the people who worked and lived in Vancouver had no place to live. He also talked about, he's the president of the Board of Thousand Friends of Oregon. Their mission is to foster approaches to develop and conserve affordable housing in Oregon, so that was interesting to learn about. Finally, I did spend about an hour on the phone with Peter Watts a couple of days before his demise. He answered questions I had about the Second Street property and also next steps for the public safety building, specifically I was asked capital campaign in about that and leveraging that within us.
Thanks. I reported last year, Peter Watts versus Trinity Fiscal Church. He was very well thought.
Dana?
Okay, so the firefighters that make minimums, I did not, unfortunately, I saw whatnot. I did some research and I was, I wanted to share with folks something that I was a little impressed with. And that is that since two thousand nineteen, our fire department has applied for and received grants in amounts exceeding a million dollars. And that's not including the fundraising that they do through the Fireman's Ball and all of the other stuff that they do. So I thought that was pretty impressive. Worked on suggestions to update the Sunday work hours ordinance. And then I sent over a letter to all of you that's in our correspondence. And I, somebody pointed out to me that I completely dropped the ball and failed to explain exactly what I intended or wanted to see happen with the ordinance on Sunday. So I created an amended letter and maybe later when we get to that point, we can discuss it. But basically, my intent was to allow contractors, commercial contractors, commercial developers, general contractors, landscape construction professionals, landscape care contractors and employees of such entities to work within the city limits between nine AM and five PM on Sunday, provided that they are not using noisy tools. So if they're painting indoors or changing the faucet or doing something that doesn't, isn't going to interfere with the neighbor's ability to enjoy their homes, I think that we should look very hard at that. Also, I did a cut and paste where I changed the contractor's hours and that was not my intention either. So that's the updated thing that I put on your desk and it'll be posted tomorrow. Wanted to remind everybody, there's a beach cleanup on July fifth at seven AM. I hope everybody will come out and help us. That is the state's responsibility, but unfortunately, they don't have the resources. And if somebody doesn't get out there and take care of it, that stuff's going to end up either in the ocean or up in our community. So in years past, our community's been great about going out and cleaning up. We normally do it at nine o'clock, but unfortunately, because high tide is so, is at ten twenty or ten thirty this morning or this July fifth, we need to get out there pretty early. Buckets will be set out with bags, you just fill them up. And somebody, usually there's people driving up and down in trucks, ready to collect your bags from you if they get too heavy. Or if not, you can drop it right back off where you picked up the bag, just make sure it's tied. I do ask that you do not bury fires, that is, that seem counterintuitive. If you see a fire, you want to smother it, yes, but you don't want to bury it toward people can't see it because it remains hot and hidden under that sand. And the only thing that you do not want to do with something really hot is hide it so people don't see it and step on it. So if there's a fire, it's better that people recognize that there's a fire there. I'm not saying allow it to continue to burn, but don't bury it. Parade lineup is at ten thirty on July fourth and I will have a float and you'll have to show up to see what it is. And August first coming up, I will be attending the League of Oregon City Small Cities Meeting in Tillmook. I've been following the push to adjust the TLT money distribution across the state. And I'm sad to report that it fell short. It looked very, very positive and it really looked like they were going to succeed. And recently I learned that they fell a little bit short, but the proponents are already swearing that they're going to make another run at it again. So expect to see that again. CMH, on the other hand, did receive the six million in funding that are requested to do their improvements up there. I also talked to Representative Jabadi about some funding that we needed here as far as pipes and for our public safety building, just reminding him constantly that we need him to help us also. And then last but not least, Cedar would like an opportunity to create a better connection with Gearheart and to that. And they've emailed me, myself and a couple of the mayor and Chad an attempt to facilitate that. So we'll work on getting together and see if we can get them to come and do a presentation for us in the future so everybody understands their value. And that's it.
Great, thanks a lot. I was thinking that the ordinance for the noise Sunday work hours would be on a work session.
Okay.
Because we've got a couple of things we need to work on.
Exactly.
But we don't need all of the staff here when we do a work session job, so everyone can take it easy. And we'll just eat it out of each other, what we want and what we don't want. Yeah.
I wanted to write it up to give you some time to chew over it and be ready to beat me up and.
Oh, there's no beating.
Point out, point out the cockroach and my yogurt if I overdo something or I messed up the dates or times again.
Sure. No, ma'am, I was not giving a report. That's why I skipped me entirely. Okay, moving on, Chief of Police.
Thank you. Good evening. Not a lot to talk about yet, the stats in front of you. Just of note, we had nine assists rendered, nine disturbances, a suspicious circumstances, made eighty-eight traffic stops, three welfare checks, wrote twenty citations, cleared eighty-four cases this month. Only have three from a month that are active. Provided fifty-nine warnings. Sixty-four traffic, actually sixty-four traffic warnings. What is of note is we had a hundred and seventy-one police contacts in the law official CD numbered. We're doing that with three people, so that's pretty good. And we're out busy and I actually had a week off in this month. So if you've been higher than I've been here for those days. The only other thing is we just had, before this meeting, the officers and I got together and did a real quick tactical operations planning for the fourth. So went over our ops plan and kind of where we're at, what we're looking at and how we're going to attack the issues that we've seen in the past. And so a fair cross for us everyone. We should have a fun fourth, I hope. That's all.
Good.
Questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Fire chief's going to be absent for this meeting?
Yeah, they've got a big training going on and they did not, weren't able to get to the report yet. So those will be coming to you.
Sure. All right. Ask for money.
In revenue account ten zero zero one eight, the city received their annual two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five contract agreement from the Gearheart Rural Fire Protection District to provide fire medical and protection services, which was two hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. So we're thankful for that partnership. The city building department has been providing water support services related to construction and or development. An invoice was issued to the city's water department. Was issued from the city's water department to the building department to financially compensate for the building department's services that they're providing. During the construction development process, the building department does water permitting through a cella, it's an electronic system now, of fee collections and processing. So people pay with credit cards and do other things. I ultimately enter them into our system, but the building assistant kind of coordinates and manages that until I get the money. They do the coordination of required city staff approvals. So all of the water, all of the development has to go through a process where the building person has to coordinate our public works director's signatures and some other things for water. And they have to provide customer support to people who are coming in. Maybe what size of water meter that they might need, what type of sprinkler system. They do some other types of support that are water related. The city is finding that as more complicated pieces of property are being developed and or researched, which I think the key word there is researched, it doesn't necessarily mean that these people are paying for permits. They sometimes have a piece of property they want to come in and they're asking questions, a lot of questions that really translate into no money because they're kind of difficult pieces, they might have funny setbacks. And so they have to provide a lot of support with no financial compensation. So revenue, we did invoice, the building department invoiced the water department for staff time. And the revenue was placed in the building account forty zero zero seven miscellaneous. And the expenditure was charged to the water account in thirty, thirty forty seven. So there is a check written for it, so you can see it in there. And then we put it into the water account just to provide that support. The city contracted with a company to replace two hundred and eighty-five old meters with new, more accurate ones, which will allow remote digital raids. This expense was charged to thirty, thirty eighty-five water meter replacement. And the city's goal is to move from using a third-party meter reader company to having our public works employees out reading those meters on a monthly basis. The physical meters were purchased earlier this year with the American Rescue Plan Federal Grant. So we purchased all the meters and then the water department paid to have a third-party person come in and replace those two hundred and eighty-five meters. We still have some difficult meters to replace, ones that maybe require a little bit more work and are maybe bigger than a one inch. So we still have a little bit of work to do on finishing up that program. All budgeted transfers were implemented this year. So the transfer was, the transfers that were made in June include twenty thousand dollars from the general fund to the building reserve fund, thirty thousand dollars from the general fund to the fire apparatus reserve fund, ten thousand five hundred from the general fund to the police car reserve fund, seven thousand five hundred from the water operating fund to the public works equipment reserve fund and forty thousand from the water operating fund to the water reserve fund. So we felt like, Chad and I talked about it and kind of looked at our numbers and we felt like the adequate balances were adequate this year to go ahead and make those transfers. So we transferred them in June. Other noteworthy expenditures were some legal notices for planning and the budgeting process. Quarterly payment to the Gearheart Volunteer Fire Association for the volunteers' quarterly gas clothing reimbursement, which was in ten thirteen sixty and vehicle updating for the new fire vehicles in seventy-four, seventy-four ninety-nine. And we look forward to the new fiscal year, we're off and running.
Great, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to take fifteen seconds of silence for Peter Watts in remembrance. Thank you very much. Peter will be missed. All right, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Yes, Peter will be very much missed, but he came this way. And he is. We're working on a replacement, I'm going to discuss that a little bit more later in the agenda. I don't, tonight we weren't able to get an attorney with the firm that I signed with quite yet because of scheduling issues, but I think we're in pretty good hands as we already discussed many of these issues with Mr. Peter Watts. For those of you that don't know, Peter did ask away on the twelfth this last month and his services were beautiful. And we're going to continue on his legacy by doing a good job and keeping the city with Gearheart out of trouble. Any questions about that? We'll get more into the attorney situation. As far as updates, you've got my update sheet. I, not a lot of significant meetings, but a lot of work has been going in. The staff and I have been spending a lot of time working on the Fourth of July. We're really well prepared this year. We have a great team, good plan. And we have, I have discussed all of the issues that Gearheart could possibly have and prepared as best that we can. There's still going to be some issues in town with some folks with fireworks and things. Keep in mind that the nine-one-one operators will be very busy. So make sure that if you do call the city, that it is in fact an emergency and not so much of an irritants. Make your best to respond to all of those, but we'll have our officers on. And I think we've made some changes to keep things a little bit safer, especially on the beach approach. So we're anxious to see how that goes. We're as prepared as we can be. We have the Fourth of July coming up, the parade, as was said earlier. This lineup for the parade, ten thirty, be there as early as you can. We're going to start closing down roadways about ten o'clock, especially on Marion, just for safety for all the kids and that that are riding around on other bicycles. Have the parade after, at the end of the parade, we'll end up at the fire station with hot dogs, free hot dogs. If you'd like to leave a donation, that would be fantastic. Fire department will also be sending, selling some T-shirts and some sweatshirts and that sort of thing. I believe they have the dump tank set up again this year, so that'll be fun. And we expect a really good family event for that. We'll be doing some cleanup after the event. And then Saturday, we have the beach cleanup, as Dana talked about, earlier setting so that we can get in there prior to the.
Right on.
Thank you. Tides. And then we will begin setting up for the street dance. We're going to be setting up and any volunteers that want to come and assist are welcome to. About five thirty is when the setup is going to be. And I believe the start time is at seven? Thirty. Thirty. Thank you. Yes, seven thirty, street dance start time. They've got a good DJ there, some things for the kids to do, photo booth and just a good time. There's going to be some food available in the restaurants that are open for that night. So we're looking forward to the street dance and then we'll be cleaning that up at about ten thirty at night after the street dance. So any volunteers that are up late at night and want to come and hang out with us, you're welcome to. It is a really good event, very happy people, good time. Take you away from all the news. We also, we lost a few other members this last month. Of course, Bob McKeown, who passed away a hundred and two, was an amazing man, went to the grade school here when it was across the way. Knew every nook and cranny of Gearheart and was just as sharp as a tack up until the end. We will very much miss him, but I understand that Don will be in the parade, so it'll be a lot. That's what I was told earlier today, so gush fingers, all that goes on. But that'll be a nice memory of Bob McKeown. He's not a guy easily forgotten anyway. Another loss that we had in our community was a past city councillor, Al Carter. Al Carter was a city councillor when I was hired here at the city. He was an amazing councillor. He had been ill for some time and he finally passed a couple of weeks ago. Al Carter was fantastic about coming in and saying, Chad, I'm going to come and give you some trouble tonight during the city council meeting, but here's what it's about. He said, be ready. And he was a very good, very good councillor and a mentor of mine. So he will be missed also and his wife, G, carries on. That's my update for now. Any questions?
Thank you.
There is no public safety building, pulling update, is that correct?
Yeah, actually, excuse me, yes, thank you. I forgot that we put that there. There is an update. So we've been working with Abe Richardson. She owns a firm, a PR firm, and she's put us in touch with. She owns a firm, a PR firm, and she's put us in touch with a company that does surveying. I had spoken to the mayor about this earlier today and we have a quote for that. We're currently getting out and doing two other quotes. Our intention is to put together a survey for the community to get as much information for the community on the public safety building and their opinions about it. And there is a meeting that I haven't told you about yet, Ms. Palena. I hope you're available for Monday at?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock. I'm going to double check that to make sure it hasn't changed. I wrote down that note for you earlier. But Monday at eleven o'clock, if you are available, Ms. Palena, I'd like you and the mayor to come and meet with me, to meet with Paige, to have this discussion because there are some questions that we need to answer. We are also in the middle of starting to search for other public or survey companies because the amount of the survey is probably going to be close to nineteen thousand dollars to accomplish. We're hoping it's a little bit less. So we're also getting some quotes from some other folks. But that meeting is important on Monday, if you can make it. I'll make sure that you can get the calendar plate. Got it now?
I'll just.
Okay.
Sure.
So more report on that soon. Now, we have budgeted for additional monies to be spent towards the public safety building. So this isn't a decision that the council needs to make, as long as the city does its job in procurement side of things. So if this looks like it's the right direction and we get a good price and it's what it is that we'd like to accomplish, with your help, we'll move forward with that to make sure that we get some survey results by the end of the month. So that the city council can make a decision to move forward on that with folks.
All right. Thank you, Chad. All right, moving on, we're going to public communications written in oral. And right now, we're going to go through the list of the mail we have. We have a letter from Becky Graham about the trees on Second. Tim Mansell about a complaint. I believe he withdrew that complaint, didn't he, because of misinformation he received?
That's, that's essentially what the letters, the letters.
That is? Oh, good for him. And we got a letter from Diana Mansell and we're going to sit tight on anything with the Neacoxie Creek and let the county come to us and tell us we've done wrong and then we'll address it. We're not going to spend a lot of time going over papers that are outdated and possibly not even valid anymore. Again, late correspondence, we've got a court-appointed special advocates thank you letter or their grant donation. We have correspondents telling us about recreational immunity laws that were enacted. We have Dana's amended letter, which we will talk about at the. Thank you. And we have a letter via email to. Just a second. From BF Law, Andrew Stumpf, concerning a code enforcement matter that Chad was involved with. Now, we also have one person who signed up and that's Shannon Smith. Your name and address, please. You have five minutes.
Okay. One sec. I have a picture for it, a thousand words. Is this okay?
Yeah, I suppose we'll be able to get the camera that way.
How about your address, Jan? Let's start the clock.
I'll wait for you.
Good job. Thank you, Chad. I have the interstate. You guys see? Shannon Smith, seven seven four Pacific Way, Garrett, Oregon. That's my building. I bought it in two thousand and seven to save it for demolition. The city was also working with some interesting developers back then. Three different houses were planned here, besides my house right now that's in the back corner. They decided not to demolish it. I was in the background planning to buy it, which is what I did, to save it for future generations for Gearhart. I'm glad I did and I know lots of people are as well. So here we are in two thousand and twenty-five. Here's two possible scenarios for the future. No trees as you look north or lots of taller trees. Same trees as many of them are there today. This is two hundred years of trees, two hundred maybe, three hundred years of trees. If you want to say three thousand twenty-five, or you got two thousand twenty-seven. My point, we need to be visionary like our founders work. It's different than plans or comprehensive plans. And if we think about beyond just the people, we think about the place. Its history, its value, its meaning. I believe that people here want to see this view and to know this is what we hold most precious and priceless because when they're gone, they're gone in this scenario. They want to know it'll be here for them for future generations, like we were able to inherit from the folks that started this town. It's that important. I know there's our bonds and building developers, et cetera, but this place is unique. Unique from many other towns along the coast. So I know there's things in process, but I want the public to know we can make change here. We can decide to save this. There are several ways. Doesn't have to go the way of just another home site. So I'd like people to know that by Friday night, Fourth of July, it'll be the website again for neacoxie creek dot org. It will be a place to gather folks who's interested in this and their desire to protect it. So I'm being rather defiant in some way because I know it matters. It's not just that we have a beach and a dune. We have a forest that is just pristine and still wild and we should keep it that way. Sometime in two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, the land behind me here went from unbuildable to undeveloped. No one got noticed from the surrounding communities. What changed? We always assumed this would always be here like that. I've talked to many people who said, really? You can cut that down and build a house right there? Yes. So with that being said, I have an interesting statement I'd like to read based upon inspiration from Jane Goodall and David Etherwell. Two thousand and twenty-five is halfway through the United States' decade of the ocean. The countries participated and committed to protect the ocean thirty percent by decade's end. Right now, only three percent of the ocean is protected, three percent. And yet with that three percent, the ocean around it has seen a resurgence, restoring the fisheries for all the overfished places on the planet. Coral's coming back, all sorts of things that they didn't imagine could happen. This is a moment of change for us and for the planet. Together, we can face that challenge by making the future happen by imagining what it can be today. I think communities of all people must imagine that future. It's our responsibility. It was then for our failures, it is now. We need to act with love and make the future ours now because it depends on it. It depends on us making those choices. When we save the sea, we save the world. When we save the forest, we save the world. So this is our forest. And each visionary community said, we can do our part. Each community adds together. They all add together and they add up. And we eventually save our state, we save our country, we save the world. It's, it's piece by piece. You all know that. But we have to act in the moment of time before it's too late.
Twenty seconds.
Let us be that, our centuries visionary leaders. Let us be those people. We have to imagine that we can do what we must do because our children want us to. We would like them to know this in the future and it's too precious to waste. It's ours for the keeping and for the protecting for the next hundred years. You got to make a choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there anyone else wishing to make comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. We're going to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance nine four six, ordinance amending the start time of city council meetings. It's already eight o'clock. We started at six. Great. All right. Chad, do you want to give us a synopsis?
Sure. I'll read the first paragraph of the synopsis. Thank you, counsel. And Mayor, at the municipal council meeting, Mayor Smith requested council consider changing the start time of the regular council meeting from seven to six. When the draft was presented in June, discussions proposed the possibility of amending all meeting types and additional language addressing the flow of back-to-back, the flow of public back-to-back meetings. The item's tabled with the direction of City Attorney Peter Watts to review all sections of the applicable ordinances. With his unexpected passing, the society included all ordinances potentially affected by amending conditional language from the current draft and the package of the council review. When the package is released, the council will have had time, and as we have, to review the ordinance copies and propose further amendments to the draft during the meeting. We've still chosen color guideline that's been used to help cross drawings across the ordinance copies. Thank you, Ms. Christie, for doing that. So your council options are to approve ordinance nine four six, reading once by title only. Then we'll bring it back next month for another reading and then it will become an ordinance thirty days later. Or we can make some further changes if you'd like, or take another action as desired by council. We don't have any recommendation from the staff. Legal analysis is there and the ordinances in the past have been changed. There really are no issues. If the ordinance itself was passed as it is per six P M. start date, we still could hold meetings earlier than that and then say that the council meetings is immediately following afterwards. Peter did opine on that. Others than that, this is a pretty clean change. If you have any questions, we'll do our best.
Okay. Is anyone interested in making a motion?
I move to approve ordinance nine four six, amending the start time of city council meetings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So I'm just curious, is that if we have an executive session or whatever before city council, does that mean we're starting like at five?
Yes. We're just, we're just shifting everything back so staff can get home sooner instead of these nine and ten o'clock meetings that happen.
I have a question as well.
Karen.
So for the legal analysis, it says that there is no legal issue with state and regular council meeting immediately following. And didn't see that as a written change. Is that something that we will make on a case-by-case basis then?
Gives us flexibility.
That is. Case by case.
Yes.
So that answers your question?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Against?
Aye.
All right. You got that just in?
Yeah.
I'll read it once by title only.
Read it once by title only, please.
We have ordinance number nine four six, ordinance fixing the time of regular council meetings. We have an ordinance six nine seven and then section one, ordinance six five.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, ordinance nine four seven, ordinance amending text of the City of Gearhart zoning ordinance, section three point one zero flood hazard overlay zone. Can you give us a synopsis, Garrett? It's just the repeat of what you've already said on option A?
Yes, the ordinance specifically adapts option A.
Motion from anyone?
Motion, we approve option A, the planning commission's recommendation, ordinance nine four seven, and ordinance amending the text to the city's zoning code, section three point one zero flood hazard overlay zone. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So passes?
Mayor, I'll read that once by title only for you.
One.
Ordinance number nine four seven, an ordinance amending text of the City of Gearhart zoning ordinance, section three point one zero flood hazard overlay zone. We'll bring this back to you again next month and then thirty days later it'll become ordinance.
All right, moving ahead, ordinance nine four eight. An ordinance granting a franchise to Quest Corporation, D B A, CenturyLink Q C, to operate and maintain telecommunications system in the City of Gearhart. Chad, can you give us a synopsis?
Sure. Quest CenturyLink's franchise development city Gearhart has expired. They provide landline service to customers in Gearhart. The attached updated draft agreement would renew the term for ten years. As a majority of the city's franchise agreements have been entered in via ordinance, the city presented to the council's ordinance nine four eight to maintain consistency with policy practices. You have the option to approve once by title only or take another action. We have seen the franchise fees for Quest and CenturyLink kind of fall a little bit over the years as technology has changed. So really, the city only receives about, well, this year it's received one thousand six hundred seventy-five. The past has been about two thousand, so it's not a large franchise agreement, but one nonetheless.
All right, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance nine four eight, reading once by title only.
Second?
Second.
You have second? Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Do we know how many people will serve in Gearhart?
No, I don't. We don't necessarily get that information.
You know, I'm just reading this and I'm thinking, okay, what are the advantages versus what are the disadvantages to Gearhart? I don't, so my question would be, are there any disadvantages to approving this?
No, the only other thing, and I've discussed this earlier with the mayor too, is the city has the ability to go up to a five percent franchise fee for all, you know, all companies doing business within our right of ways. And I think that we're going to do, when we renegotiate any future franchises, we'll push for that five percent. Didn't quite get there here on this one because we just, I didn't learn about that in time and that this franchise agreement is so small, there really wouldn't be much of a difference. So I don't have any concerns. They're good to work with. They're good partners within the city. They behave themselves and they act adequately in our right of ways. I don't think that there's any downside.
And it's important you have landlines that are on an emergency.
Some people are actually moving back to those these days. Yeah.
Well, wait a minute. Are the landlines even going to be working?
That depends on the emergency.
You've got your own phone system, positive way, yeah.
We've had an earthquake, though. Are the landlines still?
Oh, earthquake. No, I was thinking power outage. No, it's yet to be seen. No warning. Do you mean? No promise. Yes, we have a motion second.
Is that the end of discussion? Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Chad.
Ordinance nine four eight, ordinance granting a franchise E two, Quest Corporation franchise, to Quest Corporation, D B A CenturyLink Q C, on behalf of itself and its operating affiliates, CenturyLink, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Gerhard.
All right, moving on. Resolution one zero zero eight, resolution adjusting water rates in the city of Gerhard. Synopsis? Chad?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, in two thousand twenty four, Gerhard City Council approved two water rate increases, implementing water conservation block pricing, and approved a much-needed water ordinance update that addressed processing and legalities. These changes stemmed from recommendations made within two thousand twenty three water rate study that we did. Included was the goal for the council revisit an annual water rate increase. Prior to budget approval, last year's budget process determined a ten percent increase was needed in order to keep future sustainability on track. For your twenty five, twenty six budget process proposed and approved a five point three seven percent increase. However, in regards to tapping fees, county-wide comparison was done. It was determined that there are substantial, we were substantially undercharging for those parts and services. What we are, what we currently charge is not, in most cases, enough to cover the vendor invoicing. Therefore, a seventy one point eight five percent increase is proposed for those tapping fees, not the water rates, the tapping fees, and services with flexibility to increase is needed depending on the scenario. Draft customer information sheet for the water billing is also up there for you to read. So your council options are result, approve resolution one zero zero eight, which the resolution shows a five point three seven percent increase. Plus, the increase in the tapping fees is just, your other options to make changes and motion to approve some any or to take another action. Staff recommends the council move to approve resolution one zero zero eight. And we have a recommended motion there. And the analysis and financial analysis is also included.
I move to approve resolution one zero zero eight to increase the water rates of Gerhard by five point three seven percent and tapping fees by seventy one point eight five percent for fiscal year two thousand twenty five to two thousand twenty six.
Second. Okay, I would like the council to consider making it an even ten percent. And that is to help build our water fund. It's a five dollar increase. I think it's all, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be a bank breaker for anybody. But I am very concerned about the water fund and making sure that it is well-funded. Because we're using it as, as a fund that is helping pay for projects that are necessary for the state, for the city, and for the personnel that are working here. So I would like to, if you agree, rescind your motion. And I'd like to make one for ten percent.
I do not agree. I do not want to rescind my motion. I'm a little worried with our water conservation efforts. We're still in the infancy stage with those. And what I'm afraid of is that if we suddenly increase the costs too much, people are gonna conserve too much water and we're going to undermine our efforts. I think that we have to find a balance. And as we do increases, we have to do it carefully and take the temperature and see what type, you know, what the cost and effect is before we make huge increases. I did, I haven't agreed with the increases in the past that have been more than what were recommended. But I think that I'd like to be cautious, especially with some of the other things that we have going on in the city that, you know, where citizens are concerned about money and how much they're gonna have to spend.
Okay. So. There's a motion and a second, does anyone?
Could we split the difference and raise it eight percent then?
Well, I, um, yeah, I could probably persuade it. I just do not want to, I mean, five dollars isn't much money right now. But it's five dollars on top of what we've already done. And then possibly if we were to potentially have a bond, you know, I mean, that's another hundred dollars for me a month easily. And it all adds up and I'm living on, on a strict income for the rest of my life. So I want to make sure that we're careful.
We have, I don't disagree with you. We have historically low water rates. And so we're kind of playing catch up on us at this point.
I, I, I agree with that. I, I, it's not, I, I'm not arguing that point. What I'm afraid of is that people like me who are watching their budget very carefully are then going to say, well, if it's gonna cost me more, at some point I'm gonna use less. And then the city's not making the money because they're not, I'm not using it.
But you would be able to go to eight percent? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, I, I, I can be reasonable. I can be persuaded.
All right.
I'm uncomfortable, it's seven dollars and fifty cents.
What percentage is that?
Seven point five.
Okay. All right. Well, if you rescind your motion, I will make a motion that we increase it to seventy point five.
Okay, I will rescind my motion.
Will you rescind your second?
I'll rescind my second.
Okay, I've made a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much, people. Moving on to, and we don't need to read this once.
Oh, it's a resolution.
Yes, ma'am. This is resolution one zero zero nine, a resolution supporting application for a housing planning assistance grant for the residential land readiness project by the Klatsev Regional Housing Task Force and Klatsev County. Chad?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, the housing planning assistance grant for the residential land readiness project. The city of Gerhard and other jurisdictions participating in the Klatsev Regional Housing Task Force, which we have been, are, are developing a project proposal for the Oregon Department of Land Conservation Development Housing Planning Assistance Grant Program to advance residential land readiness throughout Klatsev County, including in the city of Gerhard. If funded, the project would begin around January two thousand twenty six and end about June two thousand twenty seven. Sccope of the project would be to evaluate the development readiness of selected residential lands in and adjacent to each jurisdiction and identify local government actions to improve development readiness. Participating jurisdictions are in the process of identifying focused locations and developing grant proposal, and the proposal is due August fourth, two thousand twenty five. The grant program does not require local passion kind of match, and the city is not offering or committing any of that, any match by endorsing the project. Staff does anticipate spending around three hours contributing to the proposal and around twenty hours on the project if awarded. The grant proposal is being developed by Klatsev County staff. Klatsev County would be the formal grant recipient and the project manager through the D L C, the selected consultant that would be assigned the work on the project. Project builds on and follows the same regional collaboration while with the housing planning assistance grant project to keep housing infrastructure and buildable land reports for Gerhard and other Klatsev County jurisdictions over the last two years. There is the resolution affirms city's general support for the participation in the project. You can resolve to approve, make changes, or take other action. Staff does recommend the council motion to approve the resolution one zero zero nine to show support of the city applying for the grant. The resolution is attached. And this would give the city a lot of information that they forward if they were to do anything such as a, this would give us information such as urban ground value expansion if the city had decided to do that or other areas that are close and within us. And then to take another look at what land we do have available in the city of Gerhard and how that is being developed. So a lot of information. There is no changes that are being proposed at this point, even though this committee, once finished with the grant, may come up with some recommendations for the city of Gerhard for your consideration in the future.
I have questions.
I'll do my best. Garrett's gonna appear to back me up. And why not? I believe you've also been attending some of these meetings, but I'm not sure you're involved in this.
Not so much.
Okay.
Okay, so I didn't really understand this, to be honest. I mean, I sort of understand it, but what is residential land readiness? I don't even know what that term means.
The various states of the land that we have, I think, and Garrett, correct me if I'm wrong, this also has to do with, you know, our ability to develop land due to our available water resources, due to and things such as that. So it's really a study in the area surrounding Gerhard and what its future looks like and how Gerhard can participate in either bringing these into the city of Gerhard or not. And at least quantify a lot of the information about the property that's around Gerhard so that we can make better decisions in the future.
But wouldn't we have access to that information anyway? We didn't, even if we didn't participate in them?
Garrett?
Yeah, so the project is an opportunity to dig deeper into understanding infrastructure limitations. In Gerhard's case, it could be water supply limitations. Another potential area is if if there's aspects of our zoning ordinance that put residential land developers into sort of catch twenty twos, sort of situations that are just unreasonably difficult to work through. And if they, for example, if city council in the end found that they don't serve the city in their current form, it'd be, you know, the report would serve as a basis for potentially making changes later. So it's a, it's an opportunity to look at a variety of issues that could affect the developability of housing. It will be up to the city to provide some guidance on issues that we want to focus on and any locations we want to focus on. So in that regard, yes, there's information that's available to us already. But the project is an opportunity to explore those potential issues in more depth and come up with some potential solutions for planning commission or y'all to consider.
I, I guess the reason I'm asking those questions because is it worth the trade off of twenty three staff hours? We're already slammed with stuff that staff is trying to handle. So is it worth the trade off?
From the city administrator's standpoint, yes, that is an excellent question. But I think that when we take advantage of these grants and then we participate with our information that they would be requiring of us and we get a lot of, I'm hoping to garner a lot of information about our surrounding area and how Gerhard is growing, not growing, needs to grow, needs to, definitely, what utilities to look at. The information is very valuable to us.
Right, but wouldn't Garrett have access to that information and can bring that us?
I'm sure if he did, it would take more than twenty hours to put together.
He's gonna have to bring it to us anyway because we're gonna, he's gonna do a presentation if it comes down to something where we need this, right? I'm not trying to be different, but I'm just trying to.
No, that's exactly right. And he would have to provide that information if we did have to move forward to it. And it could take us, because again, we're small, we don't have the staff like other places doing. I think what we're doing is we're multiplying our efforts. These twenty hours that we are giving towards this project is going to turn into a much better return on that investment in the information that we get back. So carefully, I would suggest that we approve this so that we can get that information because really we don't need it necessarily. Not without a whole lot of time, no.
Any other question? Motion?
Motion to approve ordinance and one zero zero nine, resolve to approve.
Seconding one. Discussion? Moving on now, going to move the new business. Chad?
I'm authorized by the city charter and applicable contract rules, particularly on emergency, which this is. Our time-sensitive situation. The contract was signed last week due pending business required legal assistance. However, I wanted to give you all the opportunity to review the terms, share your concerns in the public setting. Should be noted that while B B H has agreed to take us on temporarily, it made clear that they don't have the capacity to take us on full time. This will remain available, they will remain to have only until we formally fill the vacancy through the R I P. process. The R I P. has been published. The R I P. has been out, emailed out to a bunch of big Oregon cities. Also emailed a lot of law firms, law firms in Portland, Salem area. And so we entered into this contract. We had worked with Chad Jacobs before, he assisted us in our campaign ordinance, and he did a fantastic job. He was recommended by Peter Dunn, and he is prepared to end, doing us a favor by taking us on in here. So it's really an update. Unless you have any other questions at this point.
Wouldn't you anticipate will, would be there time fulfillment of this? I know we're talking six months, we're talking a year, are we talking three months?
No, the, the R I P. process is really a two-month process, somewhere near there. And so bringing the R I Ps, we condensed it as much as we could. I don't have the R I P. in front of me for what the, the date is for making this decision. I have news for yous out there, just hoping. They put out, I have news turns out there, just hoping.
Can you hear me now, Ms. Kristin? Can you hear me okay?
No matter what company is using it, it's still the same.
That's true. Okay, Kristy, can you hear me now?
Went past it's dead time.
What, the internet?
Yeah.
Recording.
It's your bell and Chad. It needs to go to nine o'clock. It's just stolen.
Says fast, internet connection's fast right now, or wifi.
Since the internet connection is, I'm sorry, fast?
Yeah, you can just test it, you know, wifi access, Google it. Internet's amazing. But it works. Yeah, that's what it works. Okay. Okay. We're as good as we can. We have internet outage and, uh, three things for loop. So it is being recorded.
The bandwidth is just real. Can you hear me?
Can you hear her? Yes.
Okay, the bandwidth is really low, so I would just get through it as quickly as you can because I don't know.
Questionnaires, got it.
Fast. Fast, no doubt.
Yes, sir. All right, so this is an authorization to execute ODOT Cooperative Improvement Agreement. Uh, authorization to execute ODOT Cooperative Improvement Agreement number, I'm going to let you read that later. Uh, project name, this is for the US 101 Pacific Way Gearhart Improvement Project background. The background is that the Oregon Department of Transportation is undertaking a federally and state funded infrastructure improvement project at the intersection of the US 101 and Pacific Way. The project includes replacement of the existing traffic signal, installation of a stormwater system, construction of new sidewalks along US 101 and Pacific Way, and ADA curb ramp remediation on US 101. ODOT will manage all aspects of the design, permitting, instruction and funding. The project is listed in the 2024-2027 statewide transportation improvement program. And there's a key number for reference. Council has a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute the cooperative improvement agreement with ODOT or take other actions. Uh, I've gone through the agreements and was concerned about some things to be aware of. Um, power costs are one of the obligations. We will be paying for the power to operate the site as we are already doing now. Sidewalk maintenance, sidewalks will be added in, ADA sidewalks will actually come a little bit farther into Gearhart and it will be our responsibility to take care of those sidewalks that are on the city property that will not be on the ODOT right away. So the City of Gearhart is getting some sidewalk out of this, not a lot, but a little bit. Um, and it'll be up to us to, uh, maintain that sidewalk. Uh, ADA compliance, of course, is really what's driving this project. Uh, ODOT got into a little bit of trouble because that's not an ADA compliant intersection, so that's what they are remitting and that's why it's a priority. Lane restrictions during the maintenance, the city, any city work that impacts traffic flow will require coordination with ODOT and we're okay with that because we don't have any big plans. Termination clauses are included. ODOT reserves the right to terminate the agreement unilaterally if Gearhart fails performance obligations, which would maintain the sidewalks and potentially some drainage or if funding disappears, which can happen. We all saw the news today. I, identification, indemnification requirements. Uh, Gearhart must ensure its contractors indemnify the state and cannot allow them to act as legal representatives to state without approval, but we're not using contracts, so that's not an issue. Contractors and maintenance informant, uh, enforcement, general provision number nine, if Gearhart fails to maintain its obligations, example, the ADA sidewalks, ODOT may step in and bill us for those costs. Those are the only things that I really saw that the city was going to be held accountable for. I think this is a good deal for the city. It would be nice to have that intersection updated. Any questions for me?
No, I don't.
Snow, you go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to, to say that if we were to pass this, I would be concerned that I, I would want the city to do everything it could to support the businesses down there that would be impacted by it doing whatever we can to advertise they're still open and, um, you know, remaining in, in close contact with them to get out in front of any problems that happen quickly.
Excellent point. The businesses were notified, uh, months ago and they did have meetings with most of those business and property owners out there, talking to them about the plan. Some parking lots will be affected because some of the parking lots are in ODOT right away and city right away for that, but those are being, um, discussed. And so planning is not quite finalized, but, uh, it's city's final draft. And there's still, as you see, you go out there, there's still a lot of engineers out there taking measurements. So the recommendation is that the council authorize, uh, you to execute the cooperative improvement agreement with ODOT.
And we don't need to read that number, we would just go with the cooperative agreement, improvements agreement, motion?
I moved that we approved the agreement with ODOT.
We authorize the city administrator to.
City administrator.
To authorize. Yeah, okay. The ODOT Cooperative Improvement Agreement for the US 101 Pacific Way project?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And this is new business, uh, last month. Peter said we had to bring it to the agenda. It wasn't on the agenda. I wasn't in town to talk to Chad about it, but describers error on the tree ordinance were, oh, solar, it's solar panel that they dropped. The word panel is a word that we used in describing what solar meant in the trees. So I would like to have it amended so the panel is placed in the tree ordinance in the right location.
Okay. We can bring that to you during the next meeting if you'd like, uh, with an adjustment to that ordinance. Write it out to update that.
Okay, well, we can pass it now and then you can bring it to us and we can okay it, right? Because otherwise we'll have two months without having a panel in there.
I thought you told me that the scrivener's error was, was corrected.
Yeah, I was incorrect because I was thinking of something else that we were talking about and I was listening about solar, so my apologies on that. And I do really need to make some changes to this particular part of the motion, uh, the ordinance to correctly describe what it is that we mean by solar access, uh, in there. So, um, as long as we're very specific, I think we can go that way.
Okay. All right, then it's, uh, all those in favor of adding the panel to the tree ordinance for solar panel?
It's a word. After solar.
Yeah, just playing this one up here. I believe that'll work.
Okay. Then all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Was this a consensus?
Yes.
To move forward with fixing this for a bit of thing?
Yes. All right.
It was something Peter mentioned last month. I have the need to bring back this month to fix it, right?
Next, on new business. City Administrator Review. Do you want to read the synopsis, Chad, or do you?
Sure.
Uh, per contract, city council is conducting a performance review of the city administrator. Last year's updated evaluation document provided council beginning May, which ended May a few weeks later, review. Official performance review is conducted during the executive session earlier this evening. Decisions are not made during an executive session, therefore the council will now resolve to accept or deny the continued employment of the city administrator to make salary adjustments if so desired. Your options are to resolve to approve or deny future employment, take other actions decided by council or do nothing.
Has anyone?
I would resolve to approve the city administrator future employment, making salary adjustments uh, at this time in the way of, uh, the, uh, cost of living increase that the other uh, employees would get and to table, uh, any other salary adjustment until council has more information on comparables, et cetera.
Okay. Second, any discussion? Karen, none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
That's just, you want to run for July.
Yeah. We're not going to hear that fast. We gotta do it, you gotta do it.
All right, council concerns. All I know.
I have no particular concerns written down on my agenda.
Great, Sharon?
I don't know.
Dana?
Um, I just want to reiterate that, uh, I'm going to be around the fire station on Friday after the parade to help out in any way I can, but if anybody wants to have a friendly discussion, uh, or offer constructive suggestions on how to improve our emergency responders dangerous environment, I'll be happy to hear them. I'll be there for them.
Preston?
Uh, I just hope that everybody has a safe and happy Fourth of July. Yeah. City doesn't burn down.
Well, that's a good thing.
I'm going to stay home.
Tranquilizer. Yeah.
You're opposed. Hey, you know something? 725 F Street is grass two and a half feet high. That woman has never cut the lawn. If someone lets off a firework and a lens in there, we're going to have a grass fire in town. And I do know neighbors that live across the street from that house that like to light off fireworks. Illegal fireworks. It's just a, a, a word of caution.
I was doing math real quick. I was just making sure that that was in your next door neighbor, Nick.
No, it's not my next door neighbor. That's my shop.
Well, yeah, we'll go keep an eye and see what we, uh, what we do this year. 720.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Go to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn. Thank you.